Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your patience as we get underway this evening. It's a little after 7:30 on Tuesday, April 26, 2022, and we will begin our town council meeting. Welcome, and thank you for coming. So we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all those who serve in our military at home and abroad. Tonight, I'd also like to remember Braintree Police K-9 Officer Lucky, who passed away after 12 years of service to our community. And also to let this body and the community know is with deep sadness, I inform you of the passing of Maurice O'Brien, father of Councillor O'Brien. Mr. O'Brien passed away peacefully last night at home in Braintree. He was 87 years old. A Korean War veteran, Maurice retired from the USPS as a letter carrier in the Braintree neighborhoods surrounding Harrison Ave, Townsend Ave, and Tottenham Road. He is survived by his wife, many grandchildren, and several great-grandchildren. Your thoughts and prayers are appreciated by Councillor O'Brien. Thank you.
Okay. Town Clerk Casey is joining us this evening, and can we begin with a roll call, please, Clerk Casey?
Councillor Baraka.
Here.
Councillor Hume will be participating remotely.
Here.
Councillor Ringus.
Here.
Councillor Flaherty.
Here.
Councillor Ryan will not be with us this evening. Councillor Reynolds.
Here.
Councillor Maglio.
Here.
Councillor O'Brien will not be here this evening due to the death of his dad. And Councillor Mastin will be absent this evening.
Thank you, Clerk Casey. Because we do have a councillor who is participating remotely this evening, all votes we will take will be by roll call tonight. So we will begin with our announcements. All councillors should have received the Budget Review Schedule. Our Ways and Means Committee will be kicking off our budget hearings next week, and we will look forward to those. All of those meetings will be open to the public to attend or watch on V-Cam. I also want to announce, for those who may be watching at home, and thank you so much to our Braintree Public Schools' Art Director Julie Campesano and the fantastic student artist we have with us in our community. We have changed out our rotating artworks here at the council, and I wanted to let you know this month we have from Grade 1 Alana Berry, Grade 3 Esther Wu and Samaya Ali, Grade 5 artwork from Sarah Wu, Grade 7 Jack Killen, Dylan Lampfier, and Elise Kidd; Grade 8 Rebecca Ward-Malloy; and at DHST Nguyen and Ifa Mokaren. So come on down to Town Hall, take a look at the beautiful artwork of our students, and thank you so much, everybody, for participating and loaning us your beautiful artwork. Also want to congratulate all of our Braintree residents who participated in last week's Boston Marathon, no small feat, including our very own Deputy Chief Michael Want, who also ran and finished the marathon. So congratulations to all participants. And then this coming Saturday, I hope you'll join us here at Town Hall, beginning at 8:00 a.m., is Beautify Braintree Day, our annual town cleanup, a great way to kick off spring. And it's a really fun town-wide event. So if you can join us, we'll be gathering here at 8:00 a.m. on Saturday morning. So with that, I want to ask, do any of the other councillors have announcements this evening? All right. Thank you. So we'll move on to our approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from March 1, 2022?
Still moving, Madam President.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councillors Ringus and Flaherty. Clerk Casey, could we have a roll call, please?
Councillor Baraka.
Yes.
Councillor Flaherty.
Yes.
Councillor Hume.
Aye.
Councillor Maglio.
Yes.
Councillor Reynolds.
Aye.
And Councillor Ringus.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much, Clerk Casey. We have lots of department heads in attendance this evening, so I want to make, I'll try my best to get everyone. We have the mayor here with us tonight, who I'll be getting to shortly; Chief of Staff Taub, Director of Finance Ed Sellman, Director of Planning is Melissa Santucci-Razzi; our Superintendent of Schools is with us this evening; Assistant Solicitor Huff, Director Arseneau, and I think I need glasses because I'm having trouble seeing everyone in the audience, so thank you for your patience; and members of our DPW staff and Golf Department. So with that, I would like to move on to Communications and ask our mayor to please join us this evening.
Thank you, Madam President, Town Councilors. Tonight, I come to submit to you our balanced 2023 budget We continue to budget conservatively, as well as we continue to utilize, fully utilize, all of our state and federal grant funding. I would like to also thank Superintendent Lee, who is here tonight, for creating and presenting a fully funded school budget. And I would just like to stress that this is at a time where building two, we're building, we've built one school, renovated and put an addition on, and we're building a brand-new school that'll be ready in '23, thanks to the voters. But I would really like to stress that our class sizes are the lowest in decades in our elementary levels. And this is important because in order for us to help facilitate and help get our students caught up and get them back on schedule, I think it's important to maintain these class sizes. And I know that this is something that Superintendent Lee had taken into consideration when putting this budget together. And very thankful and proud of all of our teachers and staff and the hard work of our students. I think that when we look at, I know that when we look at Braintree Public Schools, one of which I graduated from, as well as my children graduated from, we still maintain the highest and greatest level of education of any community. And I thank Superintendent Lee for continuing that tradition. We, in this budget, will see that we'll be maintaining our math and reading specialists at the elementary level. In addition, you will see a number of mental health items that some knew, some continued, guidance councillors, psychologists, behavioralists. These are all things that are going to help us through the post-pandemic times. In addition, as you look through this budget, you will see that we are funding OPEB this year. I know that we made some adjustments last year to bring back our math specialists to full force. This year, we will have OPEB in the budget as well. One of the goals that we've had over the course of time, and it's really been close to a decade, that we've had the ability to fully fund police and fire overtime. And it's been a goal that we've tried to reach. And this year, we have fully funded it based on what our history has been over the course of a number of years. This particular year, the year that we're in now, we do have some major, major issues that have come up. But with that being said, this particular budget of '23 is really based on what we should be funding for police and fire overtime. As well, we've taken into consideration, in the Department of Public Works, taken into consideration the increase that we've had to put into lines in regards to fuel costs going up. Our snow and ice removal budget, this year, of course, was over. We've looked at the average of several years, and we've increased that once again to try to be more in line with what it should be. And we have set aside funding for contract negotiations because they will all expire this, the end of this June. Another exciting thing is our recreational department, which really was devastated as well. It was great to watch Little Bay Ruth, Division 2 baseball here today. I know the council president was up in the office earlier. Unfortunately, it got a little bit wet and dark too soon. But it's just wonderful to see things back to pre-pandemic in so many ways. But one of the things that we really look forward to is restoring back to pre-pandemic levels our recreation activities and camps that we have throughout the summer. So that is going to be one of the things you'll see in the budget as well. And if I might, I'd like to throw a plug for, I don't know if you had mentioned, Beautification Day, which is this weekend on Saturday, 8 o'clock, right out here. And you get a great reward after. I'm sure a lot of our folks here will be cooking. I'm sure Mr. Arseneau, the DPW director, will be flipping burgers and hot dogs and such. So after the cleanup is done, we all head back to Sunset Lake for a nice, nice, uh, lunch. In presenting this budget for fiscal year '23, once again, I reaffirm my commitment to building back our revenue and reserves through continued conservative fiscal management and utilization of all COVID-19 relief funds. We have and continue to live through historic times. We have overcome Herculean challenges due to the pandemic, and I am optimistic about our town's future because of the great promise that lies ahead. I want to thank the Town Council in advance for the hard work in the coming month when we will complete, when you will complete a thorough and in-depth review of this budget. I would also like to thank all of our department heads for working with me to create this balanced budget. And lastly, I'd like to thank all of our town employees for the hard work they do each and every day to provide so many great services for our community and also our residents for making our town the greatest community to live in. And with that, I would like to present a copy for you, Madam President, and we will have more to come, of the '23 budget.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And as the mayor said, the next step in the budget process for residents who are watching at home is for our Committee of Ways and Means to do a thorough review of the budget. Those meetings are set to begin next week. They are all open to the public. All the documents that the council has access to are also available or will be available to the public on the town's website. So it is a fully transparent and open process. I encourage you to watch on V-Cam. You can come to Town Hall. You can send in your questions or comments to towncouncil@braintreema.gov. And then the first Tuesday in June, the council will be holding a public hearing to hear directly from the residents if you'd like to speak to us about the budget at that time. So that's what we have upcoming in the next month. And thank you again, Mayor Kokoros, for that presentation. All right. So with that, we have our next announcement from the mayor's office this evening regarding MBTA communities. I know, I'm sorry, Councillor O'Brien can't join us this evening. I know he's been anxiously awaiting this report, as have the rest of us. So Solicitor Huff and Director Santucci-Razzi, I will yield the floor to you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Madam President. Thank you for having us here tonight. Director Santucci-Razzi and I are going to be presenting a presentation about the new MBTA communities law. We also have hard copies, which we can also email to you for any of the councillors who are participating remotely. We can forward that on as well. So we're just going to get set up here. Take your time. And, okay, good. Good. Thank you. See what I can do with my computer not calling off of this?
I can move my stuff.
I think I can. Oh, okay.
There we go.
Okay, there we go. Go, friend. Okay. Hang on a second. I don't think I have to run the program again. Okay. Ready to share. Okay. Great. There we go. Okay. Here we go. Great. Okay. Great. So here begins our presentation. I'm going to just go over the slides briefly with everyone, and then we'll have a question and answer session. We provided you with copies of the slides, as well as some thoughtful commentary from the South Shore Chamber of Commerce, the Mass Municipal Association, and the DHCD, a copy of the DHCD guidelines. Oops. Oops. I hit the wrong one. Hang on. Sorry. Okay. Okay. All right. So if you guys remember, you know, I came and spoke with you about the Housing Choice Law. This was the accompanying part of the legislation. This is the new GL Chapter 48, Section 3A. And this, it says that, and I'll get into what an MBTA community is shortly, but an MBTA community shall have a zoning ordinance or bylaw that provides for at least one district of reasonable size which multifamily housing is permitted as a right. And then they put in qualifiers there that there is not to be any age restrictions, and it should be suitable for children. And that a reasonable size, and this is all the statutory language now, will have a minimum growth density of 15 units per acre and then also shall be located not more than a half a mile from the commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, bus station, if applicable. They also set forth the penalties. The statute sets forth the penalties for not complying with the new law. And it will remove the community's eligibility from the Housing Choice Initiative, the Local Capital Project Fund, and the Mass Works Infrastructure Program. So here is, you see here, here's the MBTA communities. This is a map. You guys can see Braintree, right there. And it's defined as an MBTA community is a city or town that is one of the 51 cities or towns as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 151A. One of the 14 cities and towns is defined in Section 1 of the same chapter. And I'm not going to go and read all this for you because you guys can go back and review, and I think it's always a little boring when somebody's reading to you. But needless to say, Braintree, you know, with the commuter rail station and with the Red Line certainly qualifies as an MBTA community. Specifically, Braintree is a rapid transit community. So the statute defines multifamily housing as a building with three or more residential dwelling units or two or more buildings on the same lot with more than one residential dwelling unit in each building. And then, and we'll talk about this next, the draft guidelines. So implementation of the statute was put on hold until DHCD issued guidelines to implement the statute. DHCD has now issued draft guidelines. They are not in their final form yet. They are still in draft formation. And the, but the draft guidelines give guidance to all the communities on how to implement this particular law. So the problem I'm having is I just can't see the little arrows on here. Okay. Here we go. Apologize. So this here talks about just when DHCD issued draft guidelines, and it talks about the kind of stuff that we need to take now. So this is part of what we're doing right now is we're presenting the law and the draft guidelines to the town council no later than May 2nd. And we're clearly within that timeframe. And part of what we're working on right now is preserving our eligibility for this grant cycle because there are certain projects that are looking, seeking those grants. So to, and then the next thing in the slides, it talks about what to do under the draft guidelines to maintain further compliance, you know, for the rest of this year. And then, no later than December 31, 2020, to submit a complete request for determination of compliance, to submit a proposed action plan as provided for in the draft guidelines. And that, also comments here that DHCD is, will try to help communities as much as they can with how to comply with this. But that's not what we're working on right now. We're just trying to maintain our eligibility for this current grant cycle. So the guidelines go forward, and they talk about like what it means to allow a multifamily housing as a right. And the draft guidelines say that means construction and occupancy, multifamily housing is allowed without the need to obtain any discretionary permits or approvals. And that's talking about, so it wouldn't be with a special permit. It allows for site plan review and approval. And again, it talks about the housing suitable for families, means that the development would not be age restricted, and there'd be no legal restrictions on the number of bedrooms, size of bedrooms, and number of occupants. DHCD will deem a multifamily district to comply with these requirements so long as the zoning, you know, doesn't require age restrictions and doesn't put any limits on what we just talked about, the units, the bedrooms, the size of the bedrooms, or the number of the occupants. You know, and again, you know, the effect of not complying with this is that your community would not be eligible for the Housing Choice Initiative, the Local Capital Works, Local Capital Project Fund, or the Mass Works Infrastructure Program. Now, it starts to turn to some of the more technical aspects of this. Do you want to talk about the reasonable size? Okay. All right. I want to switch over with more.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Crystal covered a lot of sort of the basics that are outlined in this MBTA community stuff. And sort of, I guess, everybody's probably wondering, what does this mean for Braintree? So Crystal had mentioned that you need to have a district, an MBTA district, and it needs to be of a reasonable size with a minimum baseline density of 15 units per acre. And what does reasonable size mean to DHCD? It means not less than 50 contiguous acres of land with a unit capacity equal to or greater to the unit capacity specified in Section 5 of the guidelines. You're probably wondering what that means, and we're going to get to that shortly. Draft guidelines say that the multifamily district must be at least 50 acres of land or approximately 1/10 of the land area within this half-mile radius around the stations. And a district should not be a single development site on which a municipality is willing to permit a particular multifamily project, meaning if you have a project in the queue, you can't just say, "Okay, we're going to pick this particular site, and we're done." That's really not what the state is looking for. An overlay district is permitted provided at least one portion of the overlay district is at least 25 contiguous acres. So we have both the Red Line Station here, and we also have the commuter rail down in the landing. So Braintree does have the option to have multiple districts as long as the minimum size is 25 acres. And no portion of the district that is less than five contiguous acres will count towards the minimum 50-acre size requirement. So getting back into the density requirements and sort of what does that really mean? So Section 3A talks about this minimum growth density of 15 units per acre, and then it goes on and talks a little bit more about what that actually really means. And it sets sort of a baseline of a minimum district capacity of 750 units is required. Then it goes down into these categories, and you can see at the bottom of the slide here, and again, noting that we're a rapid transit community. And what that means is we need to create a district to allow zoning that would enable the, that would allow for the construction of 25% of our year-round housing units. This number right here, the 15,077, was our 2020 year-round census number. And taking 25% of that, we're looking at 3,769, taking 25% of that larger number.
If I may just make a brief comment, the law doesn't require...
Crystal, I'm sorry. Just go to the microphone.
Oh, sorry. The law doesn't require production of these units of housing. They require you to zone for it. There's no obligation to produce these units of housing. It's an important distinction here, and you'll see why as we go on.
Thank you. So again, back to the draft guidelines. So we need to take a deep dive into our zoning requirements. How are we going to make this work? What do we need to do to the various dimensional criterion, ordinance that would get us to this quote "density level"? Zoning requirements, including height limitations, lot coverage, maximum floor area ratio setback, parking requirements, lot shape factors, and other restrictions applicable to the district under the zoning bylaw shall be reviewed. Restrictions and limitations set forth in any other municipal bylaws or ordinances. And then also, you could have some examples of wetlands protection, tree protection, and stormwater that play into that, into the zoning as well. The estimate must take into account for each parcel, known title restrictions on land, of, on use of the land within the district. So if you have any particular parcels within this half-mile radius, which we have some slides later that will show that, is there something there that is not going to work for this MBTA community zoning? And then further, known limitations, if any, on the development of new multifamily housing within the district based on physical conditions, such as the presence of water bodies and wetlands. And again, we'll point out some of that when we get to those maps. Per the draft guidelines, if the estimated number of multifamily dwelling units that can be constructed in the multifamily district is less than the minimum unit capacity, then again, we need to start to get into looking at things that are going to allow for this, allow for the zoning. I kind of paused when I said "construction" because as Crystal noted, it's, you just have to have zoning in place. There is actually no requirement to construct one single unit, which is puzzling to planners. The statute and the draft guidelines do not mandate the construction of any specified number of housing units. It's only required for the multifamily zoning district of reasonable size. And again, noting what we had noted previously, that there is no requirement. How does this, how do we measure this sort of half-mile? And 3A states a district of reasonable size shall be located not more than a half-mile from the commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, or bus station, if applicable. And sort of the general rule for measuring and what we used was the GIS, and we highlighted the parcels, and we were able to draw a half-mile, excuse me, a half-mile radius around those. So this is sort of just a little glimpse, again, at the timeline. I've included, this is not only included in the slides, but it's included in a separate document in your packet. So by May 2nd, we had to have this meeting briefing the council on this topic. There is a form that I will be filling out on behalf of the town of Braintree that includes some very general questions. Who's on first? Who's going to be submitting what? What do you look like? Do you have something that qualifies? All sorts of different questions. And then we move into the various phases going forward. But our goal here in Braintree is to get the interim certification for 2022. This meeting and the submission of the form that I'm going to do tomorrow will get us that interim certification. And then we move on to the other various phases of meeting these requirements. And here are our maps. So here we have the Red Line Station. I'm screaming. Sorry about that. And you can see the parcels highlighted. It's the garage and then the platform for the commuter rail on the opposite side there. And the green is the half-mile radius around our Red Line Station. And then the second slide is down in the landing, again, highlighting the station. And interestingly, some of the things that were noted in the previous slides, here we have protected areas. We have the Flow River. We have Watson Park. And half of this quote radius, or I'd say maybe, I don't know, 4/10. radius, or I'd say maybe, I don't know, four-tenths, is not even in Braintree. It's in, it's in Waymouth. So, again, there's some, some restrictions there, um, down in the landing. So, that basically concludes the presentation, the sort of the, the highlights of, of the law and sort of how it's progressing. Uh, we've included in the packets, as Crystal noted, all of the slides, as well as two detailed comment letters. Um, there's a lot of concern, we know, from other communities on the South Shore, um, and how sort of they're going to manage and sort of navigate through this. So, it'll be interesting to see what results in, um, the comments that was submitted in response to, um, the draft guidelines. Uh, and we're available to take any questions.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Melissa. I just follow up on that. Um, you know, one of the, um, you know, one of the draft letter, one of the letters that we, we've given, which is, um, some of the letters that were generated in response to the comment submission period for the draft guidelines is from the South Shore Chamber of Commerce, and it's also one from the Mass Municipal Association. And they both have some, some, um, you know, very intelligent critiques of the law and have some comments on there I think are probably worth reading, so.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Director Santu Chiraji and Assistant Solicitor Huff. Um, I would love to open it up to council members for questions, and, um, if it pleases my colleagues, we'll have everybody go once round and then go for a second round for follow-up questions. Um, so with that, Councilor Flaherty, if you can kick us off.
This is a very timely presentation because there was an article in the Boston Globe, which some people may have read, um, over the last day or two concerning this. And in that article, the only interactive component was where you could tap your community and see the number of units that you appear to, like, the article made it seem like you were on the hook to produce that much housing, which I instinctively knew was not really the whole story, but I think, um, may have set off some alarm bells in the minds of a lot of people. However, having said that, like, if we're not on the, if there's no requirement that we build out capacity, but we do need to create this zone and make multifamily housing by right, uh, available by, by right, then how do we manage the number of, of units that it can produce? Because, I mean, 3,769 units, even if you had one person per unit, that'd be like 10% of our current population. So, can you, you know, elaborate on that so that people have a realistic sense of how this, implementing this might change Braintree in particular?
I mean, uh, if I may, uh, please. As the council president, um, not to sound, um, unprepared, but we really haven't gotten that far. Um, fortunately, we are doing our master plan right now, and one of the components is housing. And, um, I've talked to Mica Corus about kind of including how we sort of navigate through this, through the master planning process to really, you know, hone in on, I mean, we kind of know where, but, or, or the area that we could put it, but how big of a district, what kind of density, and really what works. And it's interesting because, um, you could do smaller districts with higher density, uh, you could do a bigger district with smaller density. It's really something that I think takes a little bit more time in really understanding as a community, do you, if, if these projects do come, do you want them all really concentrated? Or do you want them more spread out over that? I mean, if you look at the map, I mean, a half-mile in some of these areas is way deep into a single-family neighborhood, which, I mean, I, I, you know, that, that's pushing it, in my opinion, respectfully. Um, there are some areas I think that could, that could handle, um, some density and could handle some capacity. Um, as most of you know, I've been, you know, very involved and thoughtful and, and, um, you know, a supporter of housing over the years. And, um, this is, this is, this is not achievable. Thirty-seven hundred units is, it's, it's just, and maybe that's why there's no requirement to actually construct them. Um, it, it's just something that seems, um, not, not possible for many, many, many communities, and why an organization would put something forward that, you know, is so unreasonable that people can't even begin to get their hands around it because that's really not going to produce housing. Um, but that's sort of the, the, the information I have this evening.
And if, if I may, Madam President, um, Councilor Flaherty, I mean, I think that's a really great point that you brought up, and it's one of the points that's addressed in, in some, in the comment letters that we've included, just that, that there is a, there is an issue of implementation here, uh, for a lot of communities, not, not just for, you know, not just for Braintree. And it's something that, you know, as, as the guidelines are still draft, now there's some thought that there may be some amendments to it going forward, um, before we get the final version, we're going to have to see, um, what happens with it. So, because I, there's been a substantial amount of input, from what I understand, to DHCD sort of along those lines, from communities.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Renges, go right ahead.
Thank you for the presentation tonight, appreciate it. Um, I think I was going to first touch on the site plan review piece here. So, even though it's as of right, there is some ability for a site plan review as to, say, traffic circulation, um, but we would not be able to put, put any sort of imposition of requirements that would sort of prohibit them from building a multifamily. Is that correct?
Right. I mean, a, a cursory review to make sure that, uh, you know, lighting, parking, we touched a little bit in the presentation on those types of things, are reasonable, but you cannot start conditioning this to be unreasonable, and you can't deny it.
And then sort of, sort of piggybacking on sort of a comment that you made in terms of when you start to look at that circle and where it, where it falls, obviously around the, the T station, it's, I, I used to live on French Ave, I'm very familiar.
I just went back to the slide.
And you're, you're talking, you know, we're looking at Brow, Academy, Hobart, Tremont, Mount Vernon, those are all single-family sort of districts.
Exactly.
So, I know there was a piece here, if, are we going to be able to use that circle? Are we going to be able to show that, um, our, that district would meet the minimum multifamily unit capacity and the gross density within those small parcels there?
Well, I think that there's some other parcels, um, again, looking at that, that, that circle, there's some areas that would, they're already developed, a lot of them, but this isn't, again, it's, it's, it doesn't have to be a shovel-ready site. You can pick sites that are already developed, and you would essentially put them in an overlay district for this MBTA community. Um, again, noting the comment that you had just made and, and picked up, you know, I, I just, some of these areas are just not suitable.
Right.
For that whatsoever. I, I mean, it's, it's really, um, it's, it's concerning.
Right. I just can't picture the area, French Ave and the street running behind it of being able to support that.
No, no.
But, um, with that said also, you know, you put up a circle here, but we al, I also saw you, obviously the next one around the commuter rail station over in East Braintree. Now, we're not required to have two zones, correct? On the 3A, we would only have to create one zone?
Right, that's, that's correct. But because we have the option of, because we have the two zones, that gives us the option of having one 25-acre zone in one district and then splitting up the rest of the 25 acres in another zone, uh, no smaller than five acres at, at a time.
So, the previous circle, was that, was that 25 acres or was that 50?
No, this is 500 acres.
Okay, all right.
So, so 50 acres is one-tenth of the...
Okay, all right.
Circle, to give you a, just sort of give you a, a global perspective of what we're looking at.
Yeah. This is the half-mile radius.
So, long...
Anything in that could be part of it.
So, as long as you have the five contiguous acres, you can sort of split them between the, between the two circles? Okay.
Twenty-five, I think.
The, one, one has to be 25.
One has to be 25.
Yeah, yeah. And I can toggle back if there's questions on the different, um, radius.
Councilor...
Uh, sorry. Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening. Thank you for this presentation this evening. Uh, I do have a number of questions. I'll start with just one. And does this requirement allow credit for existing, uh, multi-unit housing, uh, in an area that would be designated or could be designated as an MBTA zone?
The answer is yes, and the answer is we don't have anything that would qualify.
So, something like, uh, the Landing Apartment, for example?
That wasn't by right.
Understood.
Yes.
Understood. By right. So, so the same criteria which sets the, any future building in the zone by right has to have been created by that same criteria previous to the zoning designation?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the, the questions, um, so the questions, like, the questions in the form that I have to fill out is, is do you have a qualifying zone that meets, you know, the, the, what's required in here?
Thank you.
Councilor Maguire?
Yes, thank you. This is really interesting and helpful, and I guess, uh, my first question would be, looking at the area around the commuter station, the next one, the fact that this is in, you know, on a town line, and there's water, and there's a park, does that adjust the requirement at all?
It, I don't think it does.
No. All right.
Okay. That's clear.
They, they want you to zone, they want you to zone a, a minimum 50 acres, um, you know, for your, you know, in Braintree, it would be, you know, 25% of the existing, um, housing stock. And that's, and then, and because we have the two, you know, we have the commuter rail and we have the Red Line, it gives us the ability to split the zones up some, um, but it doesn't reduce, um, the amount of land, the total amount of land that we would have to, um, to use to comply with the law.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one quick question, and I'll come back to you, Councilor Flaherty. Um, did we as a, did we as a town submit comments as part of the comment period? I think it ended March 31st.
Um, we consulted with the South Shore Chamber of Commerce on their, um, on their letter, and that was what we, so...
Okay. No, I was just curious. Councilor Flaherty, I'll come back to you now. So, there must be lots of communities where there's a MBTA station and it's really close to the line between two communities like we have with Waymouth. If one community has a by-right, um, zone that meets the specification, how does that impact the requirement for the adjacent community?
If I may answer this?
Yeah.
It does not.
Yeah.
So, these adjacent communities still have to meet the, the requirements of the law.
Okay. So, whatever Waymouth does, doesn't matter to us. Right. They, they have their own requirements. They, um, it's in the beginning of the slides here. So, they would fall under an adjacent community. The last choice.
But I, I understand what you're, like, so, what you're asking essentially, um, to sort of understand this, is that if Waymouth had 50 acres on their side, zoned appropriately, would we still have to do that for the same rail station? And, and unfortunately, the answer is that we would, that we have to comply with the law says. And it's, it's, it's town by town, it's not station by station. So, so the requirement applies to the town, not to the, the specific station.
Councilor Maguire, go right ahead.
So, is there a sense of what we stand to gain or miss out on with regard to housing choice, um, the Mass Works Infrastructure, local capital product, projects, et cetera?
You lose out on an opportunity to secure that funding. And is there a, a ballpark, i- is there something that can give us kind of the scale of what that could mean in dollars? Yes. Um, I don't want to call on, on my guys here, uh, from VPW that are here tonight because they wasn't, weren't part of this, um, but they, it would be projects that they would be, um, likely working on that they would put forward. And I mean, I can throw numbers out, but, you know, over millions would be, I don't think would be inaccurate.
Okay. Can I, can I just follow up? So, one of the questions that I'd written down, but I didn't ask because you mentioned that you're folding this into looking at the, um, the master plan process. So, I'm wondering if that, those kinds of stakes, you know, that, that level of consequence, if that could be part of this moving forward so that when people are looking at what it is we are, uh, potentially weighing or measuring, or what they're evaluating in their focus groups, et cetera, if the, the fact that it can be clear as to what we would gain or not gain, and what we would lose doing it or not doing it?
I, it, it is kind of already happening. Um, the department head interviews are taking place tomorrow and Thursday, and part of that is one of the consultants sits down with all the department heads and gets an idea of what are your needs, what kind of funding do you have, what kind of grants do you typically go for, what types of projects you have, you know, in your five-year plan, um, and, and including identifying different grant opportunities for us as well. So, that will all be sort of part of that document, um, anyway.
Great, thank you.
And if I may, uh, follow up on that as well. I mean, some of, some of the estimates are difficult to say because they're very project-specific, you know, um, particular, um, you know, with Mass Works, which is one that, um, you know, that we are certainly interested in, in this grant cycle. You know, it's dependent on the projects. So, you know, as they come along and they're suitable for certain grants, you know, we would apply for those grants, so.
Thank you. Go right ahead. Councilor Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam President. Excuse me. So, what impacts would this, um, what impacts from a planning perspective would it have on other use types within a designated district, MBTA zone district?
It, you know, depending on where the district is, depending on what it allows, um, you could potentially trigger redevelopment of some areas. Um, that's why you kind of, you know, in looking at this and looking at the areas, if there's uses and things that you like and you want to preserve those, well, maybe those won't be areas that are in, in this, uh, district. Um, you could use it as a tool to target certain areas that you're looking to do housing, um, and you can also use it as a tool to preserve uses that are within this area that you'd like to see remain.
Well, thank you. And, and that's a good...
Yeah, it's pretty flexible, I mean, with the half-mile, and again, kind of looking at our, what our half-miles, um, look like.
So, understanding that, that...
They just, yeah.
That, that flexibility, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Um, understanding that flexibility of how you can divvy up the area, the full area across the community, if you will, um, and the traditional, I guess, highest and best use approach to an area or a specific, uh, location or a zoning district, which, which is zoned in a particular way, does that, um, do you feel as if we'll have enough flexibility as a community? And as you referred to, we have the, we're, 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 um, working on the master plan right now. Housing is an element, but there are other, uh, as equal components to the success of the community that have to be addressed as well. Um, so, I guess the concern would be if you had a mixed use for an area around, uh, the, for an example, I'm just going to hypothetically state, the MBTA station on Ivory Street. That is an area, that corridor, of great potential for this community in a, in a number of ways, if it is zoned properly, and if it's developed and planned properly. Do you see this being an encumbrance to that effort, or do you see it as just another consideration?
Another consideration.
Okay. But there's nothing, you're not raising any kind of a concern at this point of the process?
Um, I, I'm not because, again, we have two, uh, you had specifically referenced the Ivory Street, but if you look at the two areas and the two radiuses, I, I think there's enough, um, land area within those radiuses that we could be strategic in identifying which ones have the highest and best uses multifamily residential, and which ones don't.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Reynolds. Any other comments or questions from the council?
I had one other question, if I may.
Go right ahead.
Very quickly, very quickly.
Go right ahead.
Um, how does affordable housing development work within this type of a district?
So, in, interestingly enough, um, there, there is no affordable requirement in any of this, uh...
Right.
...material whatsoever. Um, there are some other bills that are kind of hanging out there, I believe, um, but if Braintree was going to be pursuing any type of MBTA district, um, anything would include an affordable component. I mean, we can't, we cannot, I don't think any community frankly can be looking at this type of density and this type of development without an affordable component, even community, even communities that have very, very high levels of affordable housing. You start introducing thousands of units, that's going to have a big impact on people's percentages.
And, and if I may, just to follow up a little more on this, here is that there is no, um, component within this law that we've been discussing that would prohibit a town from including... from including, um, an affordable component to this. There, there's, there's nothing that would prohibit that at all. And, you know, if anything, I mean, you know, that, you know, it would certainly be compatible with that if that's something that a community decided to do.
Right. My understanding would, 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 uh, create some reasoning that you've got a use by right where you're developing multi-unit housing, right? That, that's, that's the main driver of this requirement. If you choose as a community to say, we want to, and if you have an inclusionary bylaw, can that be applied? I would think that yes, it could be applied.
It can.
Okay.
Right. There's, there's nothing to prohibit, um, an affordable component to, to multifamily as a right requirement.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, yes, no problem. Go ahead, Councilor Flaherty.
To follow up on, on that and make sure I am clear, this town has been giving consideration to an inclusionary bylaw that would be townwide. Are you suggesting that we could also consider an inclusionary component that would apply just to this district that might be separate and different from what we use townwide, or not?
Yes, you can do that.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Um, I actually have a, a couple, a couple of questions. Um, I know that the state was offering technical assistance. Um, are we taking, is that like the next phase, and are we taking advantage of that as we look ahead?
Um, again, I think we, uh, we, we have, we haven't pursued that right now through, um, NA PC. I think there's a few other organizations. Um, again, we have, um, a discussion and a consultant that's helping us on our master plan. And I just, to take this and kind of separate it with a different consultant, I don't, I don't think that's the route that we want to go.
Okay.
Um, you know, m- maybe it is, and I'm, I'm not speaking, um, correctly this evening. But if we're going to be talking about housing, we should be talking about, you know, sort of all of it. And really, how does this either work into, um, our ordinance, or what changes do we need to make to our ordinance to satisfy the various concerns about the different types of housing, uh, that are desired within Braintree?
Thank you. Um, well, I'd just like to say, I'm, I'm very happy that we are moving forward with making sure we're in compliance. We have a capital, capital plan coming up this evening, and I think it is, these, this grant money is hugely important to our community to make sure the services that residents count on and deserve can be funded. Um, and I also think it happens for us and Braintree to be very fortuitous timing, because we have the master plan. Uh, we know there is a great need for affordable housing in town so that young, younger people, older people, and others can afford to live in and stay in Braintree. Um, so I very much encourage, um, some kind of affordable component that we can add to this. I think will be incredibly important. And, um, it seems like this is very good timing for us as a community in, in terms of our planning and looking forward. Um, and I think it's also important to note for residents who are watching from home, we have more than eighteen months before we need to adopt this, if, if I'm reading this correctly. It doesn't need to be-
I think it was, was it December twenty-twenty-four?
I- Subway and bus communities must adopt by twenty-three, I think, December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's what I meant.
No, that's okay. So, I think it's important for residents to know that this is a long process. We have a lot of time to work it out as a community to make sure we're doing what works for us. Um, and I hope that there'll be an outreach component, and, and maybe it's part of the master planning process as well, um, as we're going down this path. So, thank you for putting this comprehensive presentation together.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Magliano, do you look like you have a question?
I do. I just-
Yeah, go right ahead.
Just about the dates, thank you. But we do have to have some sort of a, a plan or initial kind of movement or response back to them by this December twenty-twenty-two, right?
As of, as of right now, I, one of the big-
Yeah, I think it's gonna change.
-facts from the communities was that they don't, they're not giving us enough time to complete this. So, I wouldn't be surprised to see in the final, the final form of the guidelines to extend the timeframe somewhat. But as of right now, under the draft guidelines, as currently submitted, that it, that timeline is correct, so.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Do they even say here?
All right. Thank you so much. And will this be available on the planning department's website, Director Santucci-Razi, or on the town's website somewhere so that residents can access the presentation?
I can, I can, I can put it up, yeah. That'd be great.
Yeah, we haven't yet, but, but I can. I can definitely do that.
Yep, thank you.
Right, thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. All right. So, we are now moving on to the old business portion of our agenda. Um, we have several capital plan requests. So, I just want to let folks know how this process is going to go. We have two items, which I believe are going to be continued, so we need to open a public hearing, excuse me, in order to continue the public hearing. So, that's what we're going to do first, and then we're going to have a couple of other items that we're going to vote on. Um, so with that, two-two-zero-zero-six, Mayor Request to Approve the Fiscal Year 2022 Capital Plan or Take Up Any Action Relative There To. Councilor Ringus, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Uh, motion to open the public hearing, Madam President.
And for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ringus and Flaherty. Clerk Casey, roll call, please.
Councilor Baraka.
Yes.
Councilor Flaherty.
Yes.
Councilor Hume.
Aye.
Council, Councilor Magliano.
Yes.
Councilor Reynolds.
Aye.
And Councilor Ringus.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Clerk Casey. And now, I would like to make a motion to table Order twenty-two-zero-zero-six until May fourth at six P.M.
Incorrect.
Incorrect. Okay. Help me out, Clerk Casey.
Okay.
I apologize. This is the last-minute edition.
Okay. Ways and Means Table order number twenty-two-zero-zero-six to May fourth at six P.M. Therefore, this item will not be taken up this evening. Is there a motion to table to, to order number twenty-two-zero-zero-six to May seventeenth at seven-thirty P.M.?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ringus and Flaherty. And Clerk Casey, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilor Baraka.
Yes.
Councilor Flaherty.
Aye.
Councilor Hume.
Aye.
Councilor Magliano.
Aye.
Councilor Reynolds.
Aye.
And Councilor Ringus.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, same procedure for order number two-two-zero-zero-seven. So, we will have a motion to open the public hearing for request for appropriation fiscal year twenty-twenty-two general fund, capital budget, or take up any action relative thereto.
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ringus and Flaherty. Clerk Casey, roll call, please.
Councilor Baraka.
Yes.
Councilor Flaherty.
Aye.
Councilor Hume. Councilor Hume.
Oh, aye, aye, sorry.
That's okay. Councilor Magliano.
Aye.
Councilor Ringus.
Aye.
And Councilor Reynolds.
Aye.
Get those out of order.
Great. Clerk Casey, would you like to read the motion?
Okay. Um, Ways, um, Ways and Means Table order number twenty-two-zero-zero-seven to May fourth at six P.M. Therefore, this item will not be taken up this evening. Is there a motion to table to May seventeenth at seven-thirty P.M.?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ringus and Flaherty. Clerk Casey, roll call vote, please.
Councilor Baraka.
Yes.
Councilor Flaherty.
Aye.
Councilor Hume.
Aye.
Councilor Magliano.
Aye.
Councilor Reynolds.
Aye.
And Councilor Ringus.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Clerk Casey, for your assistance. All right. Now, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is also a public hearing. So, same set of steps. We're going to open the public hearing. We're going to hear from the mayor's office, the council, any members of the general public. Then, we're going to close the public hearing. Then, we're going to vote. So, those are the steps for the, for the next item, which is twenty-two-zero-zero-eight, Mayor Request for Appropriation Fiscal Year 2022 Enterprise Funds, Capital Budget or Take Up Any Action Relative Thereto.
Motion to open the public hearing for order two-two-zero-zero-eight, Madam President.
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ringus and Flaherty. Clerk Casey, roll call, please.
Councilor Baraka.
Yes.
Councilor Flaherty.
Aye.
Councilor Hume.
Aye.
Councilor Magliano.
Aye.
Councilor Reynolds.
Aye.
And Councilor Ringus.
Aye.
Thank you, Clerk Casey. With that, I will, uh, refer to Councilor Reynolds, Chairman of the Committee of Ways and Means, to provide his recommendation for the, to the full council.
The, uh, thank you, Madam President. The, the Committee on Ways and Means met, uh, this evening and voted unanimously for a favorable recommendation to the full council on order two-two-zero-zero-eight.
Thank you very much. Um, is there anyone from the mayor's office who would like to speak on this? Chief of Staff, Tom?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President. Nice to see everybody this evening. Um, this request relates to two capital items, both of which are coming out of our enterprise funds. The first is the townwide water distribution system, uh, in the amount of three million dollars, and two mower replacements for the golf course in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollars. Uh, just by, to start off, by way of background, where this request does require authorization to borrow, it will require a two-thirds vote of the council this evening, which we do have present with, uh, Council, uh, Councilman Hume participating remotely this evening. We also, as was mentioned, have several representatives, uh, from the Department of Public Works with us this evening, just to recognize them again, Director Jim Arsenault, Assistant Director John Thompson, Waterworks Superintendent Lou Dutton. On the financial end of things, Rob DeVito, Director of Golf Operations Darren Brown, from Stormwater Hillary Waite, and Assistant Director of DPW Ben Hulk with us this evening. So, uh, if the council has any specific questions about these projects, I'm sure that our group of resident experts would be happy to address them. But just kind of high level, the water distribution appropriation is one that we see year after year. This is to kind of coincide with the road and infrastructure work that's being funded separately under a different request as part of the capital plan. And the work is done, eh, one year in advance of final paving of the street, so requiring a fair bit of coordination that's handled, uh, quite successfully, if I might say so myself, through the DPW. The second request relates to, uh, two mowers for the golf course, one being a fairway mower and one being a rough mower replacement. Uh, for any golf fans in the room, I think we would all agree it is, uh, an essential part of their operations to ensure that the greens are in, uh, great condition. And these two replacements are going to replace longstanding items that have, have been utilized by the golf course. And for the fairway mower in particularly, it's actually going to replace an existing piece of equipment with a hybrid half-electric, half-gas mower, which is part of their continuing efforts, um, to, to utilize a more kind of green system over there. No pun intended, I suppose. Uh, one piece on the mower is really important to move those forward this evening. There is an incredible backlog on this type of equipment. So, while we are authorizing, uh, the borrowing, or hopefully borrow, authorizing the borrowing this evening, we likely won't actually be able to take possession of these items for at least another twelve to fourteen months into the future. And why that's important is we won't actually borrow the money, uh, until we take possession of those items. So, the debt service related to the two mowers won't actually hit the golf budget until the subsequent fiscal year. Uh, and so with that, uh, I would certainly welcome any questions from the council.
Thank you very much, Chief of Staff, Tom. I will open it up to my colleagues on the council for any questions or comments. Councilor Flaherty?
It's not a question. I just want, um, residents who may be watching tonight, um, to understand that these funds, both of them that we'll be voting on tonight, come from, are, are funded by enterprise funds, which are kind of their own, their own budget ecosystem, so to speak, where they are funded through rate payers rather than through your property taxes. So, the way that we're going to pay for these will be through, uh, payments by people who use these services. And just, I'm just saying that for the sake of clarity so people understand how things get funded in town.
Thank you very much. Very helpful. Any other comments or questions? I'll, um, in Councilor Ryan's absence, I do want to put a plug in because I know he would say it, that the utility coordination is really, really critical. And again, for residents who might not know, having this water distribution system ahead of roadway repairs creates a ton of efficiencies. And while nobody likes to have their streets dug up, it is a really, really great way for our community to use our services and our money wisely. So, I will be in full support of this this evening, um, and also very happy to see and hear that the mowers are moving to a hybrid system. I hope that we can continue to green even more than what, um, Mr. Brown has, is so diligent about really being thoughtful with the environmental efforts at the golf course, and I'm very excited to support that as well. So, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Seeing no more comments from the council, is there anyone in the public here this evening who would like to speak? Okay. So, with that, I think we will have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Councilor Ringus, and that is for order two-two-zero-zero-eight.
Second.
Thank you very much, Councilor Flaherty. Clerk Casey, roll call vote, please.
Councilor Baraka.
Yes.
Councilor Flaherty.
Aye.
Councilor Hume.
Aye.
Councilor Magliano.
Aye.
Councilor Reynolds.
Aye.
And Councilor Ringus.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Um, and now, we're going to move on to the motion to vote for these items. Um, and I'll ask Councilor Ringus to please read the motion.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that the town of Braintree appropriates a sum of three million and one-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollars to pay costs for the following capital projects in the amount of three million dollars, the project being water system improvements under authorizing statute, chapter forty-four, section eight, in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollars as to the project, that being golf mowers under authorizing statute, chapter forty-four, section seven, subsection one. And for the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto, that the amounts indicated above for each project are estimates, and that the mayor may allocate more funds to any one or more of such projects and less to others, so long as, in the judgment of the mayor, each of the projects described above can be completed within the total appropriation made by this order, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to the authorizing statutes described above, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Ringus and Flaherty. Uh, Clerk Casey, roll call vote, please.
Councilor President, prior to the, a roll call vote for clarity.
Yes.
Um, to, to, um, Nicole, Tom, super major, um, majority vote?
Two-thirds, Mr. Clerk.
Two-thirds vote. So, therefore, four out of five members need to vote in the party.
No. No, it's two-thirds of the whole, so you need six in favor.
Two-thirds, that's sixty percent of the three, right?
Of the ball body.
No, okay.
Of the body.
Okay. Okay. With that, Councilor Baraka.
Yes.
Councilor Flaherty.
Aye.
Councilor Hume.
Aye.
Councilor Magliano.
Aye.
Councilor Reynolds.
Aye.
And Councilor Ringus.
Aye.
Motion carries by zero.
Thank you very much. And the same, we will take up the same, um, order of operations for our next item of business, which is twenty-two-zero-zero-nine, Mayor Request for Appropriation Fiscal Year 2022 Capital Budget, Other Available Funds or Take Up Any Action Relative Thereto. So, again, we have a motion to open the public hearing for order twenty-two-zero-zero-nine.
So moved, Madam President.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ringus and Flaherty. Clerk Casey, roll call vote, please.
Councilor Baraka.
Yes.
Councilor Flaherty.
Aye.
Councilor Hume.
Aye.
Councilor Magliano.
Aye.
Councilor Reynolds.
Aye.
And Councilor Ringus.
Aye.
Thank you very much. And with that, I will refer to Councilor Reynolds, Chairman of the Committee of Ways and Means, for that committee's recommendation.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, the Committee on Ways and Means met over two evenings and voted unanimously for a favorable recommendation of full, to the full council on order two-two-zero-zero-nine.
Thank you very much. And again, I'll invite, um, anyone from the mayor's office who wishes to speak on this order.
Thank you, Madam President. As with the motion, uh, prior to this, all of the requests relative to two-two-zero-zero-nine are, uh, supported- are, uh, supporting our enterprise funds, and in this case specifically, the Water and Sewer Fund and the Stormwater Fund. So as was, uh, re, uh, referenced by Counselor Flaherty, these expenditures do not come out of the operating budget. They don't come out of the general fund. They are instead funded out of, uh, the independent enterprise accounts through retained earnings. And I'm happy to report that these accounts have, uh, very healthy balances, which allow us to support these purchases using cash as opposed to borrowing, which for some of the items, uh, is more cost-effective, given the, the nature of the expenditure, the overall cost associated with the expenditure. So just by way of overview, uh, the first item, and each of these will have to be voted individually. The first item is a hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollars for a radio system for what's referred to as SCADA. This is the second year of the two-year phased plan. The first year was funded as part of the fiscal year twenty-one capital plan. Uh, so this is the continuation and conclusion of that program. The second item is for sewer system modeling, and, uh, this relates to an administrative order for corrective action that was issued by the EPA. Several of these items are part of the town's efforts to further compliance with regards to that notice, and that is all being done through incredibly diligent efforts of several representatives of the Department of Public Works who are here with us this evening, uh, as well as with the assistant, the assistance of a consultant. Uh, so this will support those efforts. Uh, we also then have, uh, funding for sewer smoke testing, which is something that we have started this past year and will continue again that process. Uh, and if I recall correctly from our discussion earlier this evening, that's basically being done in thirds. So we did a third this year, we will look to do a third next year, and then the final third the year after that. And again, that is coordinated through DPW and involves, uh, significant notice to the residents, uh, so that they're aware of what's going on and they're not concerned, or it doesn't raise any red flags for them if their area is one that is being tested. The next one is, uh, the largest appropriation out of the fund for this motion, and that is to support the town's share of the tri-town water treatment plant. As this body might recall, uh, over several allocations, we have appropriated approximately thirty-nine million dollars as Braintree's share for the tri-town water treatment plant. And that is being funded, uh, through a loan from the, the state revolving fund, or SRF funding. That allows a very low, or in some occasions, zero-interest loan, as well as the possibility for principal forgiveness over the course of that, of that borrowing. The piece that's being funded in this just under two-point-eight million dollars relates specifically to the design work being done for the project, and that is not eligible for funding through the SRF. So, over these, over the last several years, we've increased the balance to help support funding that directly out of our retained earnings. We then have wet weather outfall inspections, which is something that's handled through stormwater. And I, I don't know if this might be Hillary's first meeting, um, so it's a great pleasure to introduce Hillary to the council. She's incredibly knowledgeable and well-versed in this area and would be happy to answer any questions that, that the body might have. These remaining items all actually fall within stormwater. The next item for thirty thousand is to support billing software, and the final item is for a four-by-four pickup truck with a plow. Again, all of these are being funded out of the enterprise fund through retained earnings. They do not impact the general fund. Um, and again, our resident experts are here, so I will leave the questions to them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief of Staff, Tom. Uh, with that, I would be happy to open it up to my colleagues on the council with questions or comments. Counselor Reynolds, go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to point out, uh, you had just made a reference in the last motion about how, um, the importance of how the water and sewer, the engineering department, the, uh, stormwater department, how they all work together, that the, the synchronization of their efforts, the data sharing, uh, the, uh, the scheduling, uh, of all of these very important component, components, uh, that are being funded this evening. And I just wanted to commend, uh, the DPW team, uh, that was here this evening at the Ways and Means Committee, uh, their, their thoroughness, the, um, the, the way, uh, the means in which they were able to, uh, explain to some of the newer members, um, of, uh, the committee, uh, the, uh, the level of professionalism, and the really, the, the detailed work that these folks do, and the, and the efforts that we're actually seeing, the, of, of, uh, value being delivered, uh, specifically from, uh, a wa, from a stormwater perspective, on top of the tried and true, uh, management, proactive management steps that the Water and Sewer Department, along with engineering, who has, really is the conductor of all of this, has done a fantastic job. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Reynolds. I echo those sentiments for sure. Um, I have a question on the water treatment plant, actually. The two-point-seven-five-six-eight-forty-six million for the design work, is that a, like a ninety-five percent engineering-done design? 'Cause there are, there are renderings on the website, so what's left to do?
I think we're at ninety percent design, but I would ask Director Arsenal or, or, uh, Mr. Dutton to confirm that.
Thank you.
Uh, the Jim Arsenal, Town of Braintree, for Work Director, also resident. Um, so yes, they are a hundred percent, the plans are, are completed. Uh, we're just trying to get the permitting finished, um, and then we'll be ready to go to bid, so.
So is the two-point-e, for design work that's already been done?
No.
Did I misunderstand that?
The, the, the class of the design work that's, that, that was mentioned is, it can't be paid through the SRF funding, so it has to be paid because SRF, well, you might wanna.
No, I think if I understand your question. So this amount was part of the previously, um, appropriated funds. However, where it's not eligible for SRF funding, we're going to not issue bonds for that amount out of the previous appropriation, and we're going to pay for it out of here, but the work has been completed.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so I was just, the work is done, now we're paying for it, basically. Okay.
Yeah.
I did, re, thank you. Perfect. Any other questions from the council?
I have.
Go right ahead, Counselor Maglio.
We spend quite a bit of time talking about this at, um, this meeting tonight, and we heard, um, in the earlier Ways and Means Committee, we heard really interesting, informative, um, fact-based, um, uh, efforts and activities that have been taking place from the stormwater department, from Water and Sewer DPW, et cetera. And I think, just as Counselor Flaherty and Counselor Reynolds mentioned, I think it's important for, for the residents to understand that this large sum of money, as, um, Nicole mentioned, is part of a, an enterprise fund. But also, it represents major, uh, work and activities that go toward cleaning up pollution, keeping pollution out of our water, keeping our storm drains clear. Um, and a lot of what we were, um, told about is that many of this happen, is happening in East Braintree. And that's because that's where a lot of the systems en, empty out into our Four River Basin area, which is an area that we greatly need to preserve and protect. So, I'm super excited about these kinds of, this kind of planning and coordination that is taking place, and I felt it was important to comment on that. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Counselor Maglio. Very well said, and, and I will be in full support of this motion this evening as well, for all the reasons. Everybody has data, so, thank you. Anything else from the council? Okay, with that, is there anyone from the public who would wish to speak? All right. Um, well, so with that, we will have a motion to close the public hearing for order twenty-two-zero-zero-nine.
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
Thank you very much, Counselors Ringus and Flaherty. Clerk Casey, roll call, please.
Counselor Berica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty?
Aye.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
And Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And with this, we need to read each motion and vote on each motion separately, and all require six votes. Two-thirds majority, right?
I believe this is just a simple majority, 'cause there's no borrowing associated.
Uh, okay, thank you. All right, so, uh, Counselor Ringus, if you don't mind reading the motions, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I would move that the council, uh, appro, approved the sum of one-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollars being transferred from fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, Certified Water Sewer Retained Earnings, the purpose of purchasing radios for the sewer system SCADA.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Maglio and Flaherty. Clerk Casey, roll call, please.
Counselor Berica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
And Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Clerk Casey.
I would move as to E-two Water Sewer Enterprise Fund that the sum of two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars be transferred from fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, Certified Water Sewer Retained Earnings, for the purpose of sewer system modeling.
Second.
Thank you very much, Counselors Ringus and Flaherty. Clerk Casey, roll call, please.
Counselor Berica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
And Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Madam President, as to E-three Water Sewer Enterprise Fund, I would move that the sum of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars be transferred from fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, Certified Water Sewer Retained Earnings, for the purpose of sewer smoke testing.
Second.
Clerk Casey, roll call, please.
Counselor Berica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
And Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Counselor Ringus?
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that the E-four Water Sewer Enterprise Fund that the sum of two-million-seven-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-six dollars be transferred from fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, Certified Water Sewer Retained Earnings, for the purpose of Braintree's share of the tri-town water treatment plant design.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ringus and Flaherty. Clerk Casey, roll call.
Counselor Berica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
And Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Six in favor?
Madam President, as to E-five Stormwater Enterprise Fund, I would move that the sum of a hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars be transferred from fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, Certified Stormwater Retained Earnings, for the purpose of wet weather outfall inspection.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ringus and Flaherty. Clerk Casey?
Counselor Berica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
And Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Six in favor?
As to E-six Stormwater Enterprise Fund, I would move that the sum of thirty thousand dollars be transferred from fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, Certified Stormwater Retained Earnings, for the purpose of some billing software.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ringus and Flaherty.
Counselor Berica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
And Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Six in favor?
And finally, as to E-seven Stormwater Enterprise Fund, I would move that the sum of sixty thousand dollars be transferred from fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, Certified Stormwater Retained Earnings, for the purpose of purchasing a four-by-four pickup truck with plow.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ringus and Flaherty.
Counselor Berica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
And Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Six in favor. Thank you very much. I think that closes out our motion.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much, um, Chief of Staff, Tom. Okay, the next item on our agenda this evening is twenty-two-zero-one-two, Mayor's Zoning Bylaw Text Amendment, Inclusionary Housing and Associated Revisions, or Take Up Any Action Relative Thereto. So, as I said, it's the April fourth meeting, but it bears repeating, uh, there are specific guidelines about the timing around opening a public hearing on zoning ordinances, which is why this item is on the agenda. However, this order is still being discussed at the Planning Board, and the council is awaiting the recommendation from the Planning Board. Once the Planning Board's recommendation is received, the Committee on Ordinance and Rules will take this up for debate and discussion. And once the Ordinance and Rules Committee has its recommendation, it will then come back as a public hearing to the full council. Um, and we will continue to make sure it is noted, um, on the agenda as such. I know there's interest in this particular item. So, we're gonna do the same thing we did with the capital project. We're gonna make a motion to open the public hearing, and then we will continue the public hearing. So with that, is there a motion to open the public hearing for order two-two-zero-one-two to, yeah.
So moved, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Ringus.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Clerk Casey?
Counselor Berica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Six in favor. Okay, now with that, I would ask, is there a motion to continue the public hearing for order twenty-two-zero-one-two to May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two, at seven-thirty P.M.?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ringus and Flaherty. Clerk Casey?
Counselor Berica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
And Counselor Ryan.
Ringus, aye.
Thank you, Clerk Casey.
Goodly.
All right, thank you, everyone. All right, we're now moving on to twenty-two-zero-two-zero, Superintendent of Schools, MSBA Statement of Interest for Project Braintree High School, or Take Up Any Action Relative Thereto. Uh, so with this, I will refer to Counselor Reynolds, Chairman of the Committee of Ways and Means, for that committee's recommendation.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Ways and Means met last week and voted unanimously for a favorable recommendation to the full council on order two-two-zero-two-zero.
Thank you very much. Um, and I would like to invite Mr. Lee, our Superintendent of Schools, if you have, would like to speak on this.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the council. Uh, I really hope to answer any questions that folks might have. As, uh, I think many of you know, uh, the school system has been applying for a statement of interest for Braintree High School since two thousand and eighteen. Uh, we continue in this process, believing that each year, uh, we become more competitive compared to some other districts that have applied to the MSBA. Uh, so the proposal that you see in front of you is very similar, uh, to the proposals we've submitted since two thousand and eighteen. We obviously update it as necessary. Um, but the vote that you would take truly just authorizes me to submit the statement of interest to the MSBA, which is a non-binding commitment, uh, in the hopes that they would invite us into the next phase of the project. So, again, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Lee. I will open it up to my colleagues on the council for any questions this time. Counselor Ringus?
Not a question, but more just a thanks, uh, for your continued work, not only to the school system, but in, in this sort of continued process. We have obviously worked well with the MSBA over the years in terms of the East Project, and now the ongoing South Project. Uh, Braintree High School has always been sort of pushed aside, but we know as a community, it is sort of the next target for us in terms of bettering, uh, our co, school community as a whole. Um, so I'm appreciative of the fact that you and the school committee have continued to push this forward, and we'll cross our fingers and hope for the best on it.
Thank you.
Well said, Counselor Ringus. Any other counselors' comments or questions? I, I have one question, Mr. Lee. Do we have any sense if this year, this time around, will be in, you, you mentioned you think you're, we're gonna be in, in better shape or better stead with the MSBA, is?
I think each year we are more competitive. Uh, and, you know, the MSBA looks at, um, which community is in the most dire situation to, to partner with. Uh, as they have been able to work with more and more communities, uh, our building looks worse and worse. And so we've become more, it's a sad statement, but it's a true one. We've become more competitive as a result. Uh, we are hopeful for this year, um, but I am more hopeful within the next three to five years that we will be in that place where we will be the competitive, uh, person or institution that wins. So, um, uh, again, hope is nothing really to rely on, but we are sure that we're becoming more competitive in the process.
And if I may follow that up, is, and is the one-and-a-half million dollars that the town voted on in twenty-twenty for the feasibility study for the high school, is that being, are we holding on to that until the MSBA accepts us into this program for the high school?
Once they accept you into that, that process, they would require us to do a brand-new feasibility study. So to do one prior to that makes no sense, 'cause we just have to do it again. So yes, the money is, is being held until we get invited into that process, at which point we do the feasibility study.
Okay, thank you for explaining that. Um, well, again, to echo Counselor Ringus of fully supporting this, and one child in the high school, one soon to be at the high school, and, um, even for those coming after, it's long overdue. So, any other comments? Counselor Maglio?
Well, I have no children in the high school, nor will, do I have any going, or have ever attended, but I completely support this and wish the best of luck. And you may have said this, but I go- And you may have said this, but I don't recall the turnaround. What is the cycle for when they make their decisions?
Well, we'd hope to hear back from them in about two, three months about whether or not they're gonna invite us in.
Um, but, you know, they're, they have a deadline for these submissions.
Uh, our deadline is actually this Friday, the twenty-ninth. Uh, so, you know, hopefully, voting in support of this, we would have to submit your vote along with our other application materials by the twenty-ninth, and then it's a wait-and-see.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Somebody else? All right, with that, um, thank you so much for being here this evening.
Thank you very much.
And sticking with us for this amount of time. Um, is there a motion?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I would move that upon the request of the Superintendent of Braintree Public Schools, Jane Flea, the Town of Braintree, through the Braintree Town Council, would resolve that having convened in an open meeting on April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two, prior to the Statement of Interest submission closing date, the Town Council of Braintree, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the Superintendent of the Braintree Public School Department to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated March tenth, twenty-twenty-two for Braintree High School located at one-twenty-eighth Town Street, Braintree, Massachusetts, describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future, specifically Priority Number Five, replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. Priority Number Seven, replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Town of Braintree or the Braintree School Department to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ringus and Flaherty. Clerk Casey, roll call vote, please.
Councilor Berwick.
Yes.
Councilor Flaherty.
Yes.
Councilor Hume.
Aye.
Councilor Maglio.
Aye.
Councilor Reynolds.
Aye.
And Councilor Ringus.
Aye.
That is six in favor. Congratulations, Mr. Lee. Keep us posted, please. Thank you. All right, moving on, our next item on the agenda this evening is twenty-two, zero, two, one, Mayor Request for Appropriation, CPA Appropriation Watson Park Shoreline Stabilization and Flood Control Project or Take Up Any Action Relative There Too. This is also a public hearing this evening, so do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ringus and Flaherty.
Councilor Berwick.
Yes.
Councilor Flaherty.
Yes.
Councilor Hume.
Aye.
Councilor Maglio.
Aye.
Councilor Reynolds.
Aye.
And Councilor Ringus.
Aye.
Thank you very much. And with that, I will refer to the Chairman of the Committee of Ways and Means for their recommendation.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee of Ways and Means met last week and voted unanimously for a favorable recommendation to the full council for order two-two, zero, two, one.
Thank you very much. With that, uh, Chief of Staff Taub, if you'd like to speak on this?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, this is a project that may ring familiar to the council, uh, as it is the supplemental request for funding that was previously provided for the project in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-one. Uh, this project is partially grant-funded with the Massachusetts Coastal Zone Management, and that's important because they are also mashing the supplemental funds being requested for approval this evening. Uh, unfortunately, after, uh, construction bids were received in December of twenty-one, the bids all came in incredibly high and well over the appropriated budget. So after some review, uh, involving Director Sancho Chirotzi, as well as Kelly Phelan, our conservation agent, uh, the scope was clarified and the project was rebid. Uh, bids that were received in January of this year were still slightly over budget, uh, but more reasonable in range, and it's those costs that are the driver behind this request. Uh, the request, twenty-nine thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars, is half of the overage. The other half, as I, as I mentioned, is going to be provided by the grant funder, and it's coming from the CPA Open Space and Recreation Fund. So like the previous items we've been discussing this evening, that is not money that comes out of the general fund, and it's funded through Community Preservation Act funds, which I'm thrilled to say is something that we've had an opportunity to discuss in great length before this body, because we're truly utilizing those funds to the best of our ability. And so with that, uh, happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Chief of Staff Taub. I will open it up to my colleagues for questions or comments. Go on. Councilor Maglio?
Excellent, yes. So this is, um, something that I'm very excited about and wanna, something that I support wholeheartedly, our little Watson Park in East Braintree. Um, one of the comments I made, and I'm looking forward to getting more information, is that one that all of this, um, has just to do with the shoreline. I just like to say that every now and then, um, and has nothing to do with any sort of parking or paving. Um, there's, um, information that sometimes people, um, hear that may not be accurate. So just to hear, this has got nothing to do with the parking going in at Watson Park. Um, it is simply for the shoreline to protect the flooding, and one other comment that I, I did want to make is around the, um, usability of the CPA funds for projects like this on areas when they're not completely open to the public, and I think that's an area that we're waiting to learn back on. Um, this doesn't have anything to do with voting it forward, but it's important to know that public funds used for public spaces, sometime, sometimes there are restrictions around that. Um, Watson Park, all, all parts of Watson Park are not open to the public. One of those parts, uh, one of those parts being the splash pad. So I just want to put that out there, that, um, that was designated, is not open to the public, um, I think, two years ago, and, um, it's something that we need to keep in mind.
Thank you, Councilor Maglio. Any other comments from the council? Go ahead, Councilor Flaherty.
I'll just emphasize that this project is essential, and it also went up in cost in the short amount of time between when we authorized the original amount of funding and now. So it's just, the only point I wish to make is how incredibly expensive capital, capital, um, improvements really are, whatever they happen to be. And they're very, very essential, and they're very, very expensive, and residents, I, I hope residents can recognize that these costs make a difference in our lives, and, um, they're worth supporting.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Flaherty. And I'll echo, uh, that sentiment. I went back in my notes from when we voted on this the first time, and, you know, this is a really important climate resiliency measure that we're taking, um, and as we move ahead, we need to be very intentional about how we're protecting and preserving our environment. And this project is intended to preserve Watson Park, one of our green spaces in East Braintree, for at least another fifty years. So I am in full support of this, um, this evening, and look forward to its completion.
Thank you.
All right, and this is a public hearing, so is there any members of the general public wish to speak? Okay, seeing none. Uh, with that, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ringus and Flaherty. Clerk Casey.
Councilor Berwick.
Yes.
Councilor Flaherty.
Yes.
Councilor Hume.
Aye.
Councilor Maglio.
Aye.
Councilor Reynolds.
Aye.
And Councilor Ringus.
Aye.
Six in favor. Thank you very much. Oh, no, that was to close the public hearing. I'm sorry. It's getting late. Now we're gonna vote. Six in favor of closing the public hearing. Is there a motion on order twenty-two, zero, two, one?
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that in accordance with the provisions of Chapter forty-four B of the General Laws, and with the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, the appropriation of twenty-nine thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars from the CPA Open Space and Recreation Fund for the Shoreline Stabilization and Flood Control Project at Watson Park located off Gordon Road, according to Assessments Map Three, zero, zero, one, Plot One B, conditional on the funds expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee and the Director of Planning and Community Development.
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ringus and Flaherty.
Councilor Berwick.
Yes.
Councilor Flaherty.
Yes.
Councilor Hume.
Aye.
Councilor Maglio.
Aye.
Councilor Reynolds.
Aye.
And Councilor Ringus.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to zero, zero, six, two, two, Town Council Rules or Take Up Any Action Relative There Too. This ta, this item remains to be taken up by the Ordinance and Rules Committee, so I will make a motion to table zero, zero, six, two, two.
So moved, Madam President.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ringus and Flaherty.
Councilor Berwick.
Yes.
Councilor Flaherty.
Yes.
Councilor Hume.
Aye.
Councilor Maglio.
Aye.
Councilor Reynolds.
Aye.
And Councilor Ringus.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Yeah, yeah. All right, we do have on our agenda this evening, report of, from committees, um, Councilor Reynolds, I don't know if you want to report on these this evening, um, the Q-two budget